I was meeting the workplace. Goodbye, we join us in the pleasurable evening. This is Lucas.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The weather's getting better every week. More than I would be complaining it's too hot.
Yeah.
But I'm willing, I'm willing to wait for that. Okay, this is, have a motion to approve the minutes of the April twenty first, two thousand fifteen statutory and regular meeting, please.
Amen.
Ms. Smith made the motion. Second is Mr. Curry?
Yes.
Is it an all yes vote?
Yes.
Okay. All right, public comments, we have John Atkins. Principal of County Valley Middle School. He wants to talk about vocational administrative position.
I know that he really had a dialogue, I see that that is not on your agenda. I guess my question would be, or my concern would be, if you consider this topic tonight in your comments and concerns section on your agenda, is that, of course, I've lobbied for the assistant principal at County Valley Middle School on multiple different occasions. And I see that, of course, the comments have been made in the past that we look at enrollment. Currently, if you look at the administrator pupil ratio at Lincoln County High School, as it stands right now, that is one administrator to two hundred and twenty pupils. If there is an additional administrative position added there, that will make the ratio one administrator to one hundred and eighty pupils. Currently, County Valley Middle School, I'm one administrator to two hundred and fifty-seven pupils this year. Next year, it will be one administrator to two hundred and eighty pupils. One hundred more pupils than would be the ratio at Lincoln County High School. Just a couple of things, I think, to note, is that, first, our O E P A report, if you look at our O E P A report, we have one of the most stellar of the county, at County Valley Middle School. We had no ratings decrease. We had one rating of emerging, the rest were accomplished, three of which, four, three or four of which were distinguished. Think you have to look over the past few years that County Valley Middle School has made great gains. Of course, we lost the assistant principal position last school year, about halfway through the year, somewhere in that area. It's been a great struggle since, and myself, as well as my staff, feel that with, the better that we've done, the more has been taken away from us. And again, I think that if we consider looking at another administrative position in the school other than County Valley Middle School, I think that that, those sentiments will continually increase. And again, I would just ask that you take those things into consideration as you discuss this additional administrative position at Lincoln County High School. Again, I recognize and I value vocational programs, and realize that those are very beneficial to our students, especially in this town. I have desires, even, I would love to see vocational education implemented at the middle school level. I think we could all agree that we would see a huge decrease in our dropout rates. I think we would see a huge increase in achievement at the middle school level. We would see a lot more productive citizens being graduated, so this isn't a, this isn't a big vocational education. Very much a proponent of vocational, of vocational education. But again, I've also got to consider my school. I consider that, again, we are seeing a large increase in enrollment next year. Again, from two hundred and fifty-seven students this year to two hundred and eighty or more next year. And it's very difficult to do it all alone. I'll just be honest with you, if, I wish I had time to show you a demonstration. I would like to just take a, take a bag of balls, if you will, a bag of basketballs, and write all of my, write all of my responsibilities on those and toss them to one person and see how many of you could hold all of those without dropping any of them. And the biggest problem is, is that my school's been very successful, I'm very proud of my school. But unfortunately, when you're left to do it all alone, you begin to drop things that are very important. And when you begin to drop things, morale decreases, student engagement increases, and we ultimately see that school that was being very successful starting to regress. So again, that's my, that's my plea to you tonight, and I hope you consider those things as you discuss this position.
Okay, appreciate it. Okay. Mr. Atkins is the only person we had sign in, so we'll go through our presentations and the reports, we have maintenance updates. We're always glad to get Dan in here, so we'll be able to.
Dollars are an obstacle, huh? We'd all, we'd all have, you know, all these people and things we need. Well, just a few updates, I thought you might be interested in. Ranger, Hannibal, the project, the plans and drawings have been approved by the S B A. There's a pre-bid, pre-bid meeting on May the fourteenth at one thirty. And on May the twenty-eighth, we'll have a bid opening at one thirty to open bids.
Is that Ranger, Hannibal, or do you plan?
Both, both projects. This morning, I picked up materials, some additional screws and trim for the Midway building, I've just about got it complete. And I've called Robbie's Record to get a price on the delivery, so that should happen pretty soon. We just got a good facilities review from the State Department of Education on our S B A needs, project schools. At County Valley, we're completing a project with Joe and Kenny Hewitt from the State Department of Education. They are putting controls on the air conditioning. We had some issues there with some sticky fingers on the thermostat, so we're coming bypass them and put them in our Andover control software. And in doing that, that will also make it very easy for us to include safety access on that gym. That's the only building that we don't have the card reader at to enter, enter the building.
Now, at which school, in?
That's County Valley's gym.
The only one that we don't have?
That's the only one we don't have card access to. Other than a maintenance building, nobody really cares if they can look at she does, the principal.
Tommy, are, is it, would this apply to, like, after-school athletic practices?
Normally, they, no, this is during the school day, and it will just be on that one door that, that they go, they walk to the gym from the main school. They leave those front doors, the lobby doors locked anyway. And they'll need, still need a key to get in that way, but this will be during a day when kids are. For F I A and that kind of thing. For ballgames, they wouldn't, they wouldn't be using it, they'd use the entrance, the main entrance like their ladies.
And I'm getting all distracted, I would, later on, but what I was getting at was for the coaches or to have access to the gym when school wasn't in session.
They could, if you wanted to make them a card, they could enter that one door. Now, I could put a card reader on the other end of the building, but I didn't see.
How did the coaches get in, I guess, if we're not far along?
So, can, do you know, how, they use a key, don't they?
Yeah, they use a key to get in, right. Go ahead, it'd be easier.
Do they use the, the door that the kids use during the daytime, or do they come in with?
Depends on the key they have, some of them have the key at the back door, some of them at the front door.
Well, is that true of all of our middle schools?
Usually, it's a back door.
I mean, I'm talking about that they use a key rather than a card.
Usually, yes.
I guess, what I was wondering is, if, keys can be reproduced, and we'll do that. Where with the cards, not only are they limited, but don't they also show who uses it and when?
Yes.
And if our coaches were issued cards, then aren't the principals also able and Johnny could advise on this? At the end of the season, could they not make those invalid?
They could, yeah, you just take them out of the system, yes.
I just.
I like the cards, myself. For some reason or another, we were told, we were told at Hanlon not to use the cards. I'm not really sure. Told, you tell me not to use cards at Hanlon? And I'm not sure why Hanlon.
The boss, people, the coaches will have keys made, and next year, they may not be coaching. So they still got things for the gym, and she's had the locks changed several times.
Yeah, I think cards are the way to go, but for some reason or another, I was told not to.
It was, it was, if they're not employees, but if they, I guess, become a coach, then they have the right to come over and get a card.
What we were told. Want to make somebody a card? Well, I mean, we, I mean, we, that was mentioned to me, too, and the access, because sometimes we get allegations of favoritism, that somebody has a key and they take, you know, kids in there in practice and somebody else doesn't get to and all that. Whereas if the, like Ms. Lucas said, if the coaches, since being four employees, by being hired as coaches and maybe assistants, they would come here. Had a card, then they could use it. And then when their season was over, invalidate them until the next season, and then that, even if, I'm not accusing anybody of doing that, but even if it was, they can say, they can't get in there any better than I can, you know, they have to have that card. And you would be able to see who was in there and when. So if somebody went in there at a time they shouldn't have, you'd also know whose card was used to get in there, right?
Yeah, County Valley, or Duval and Midway use key fobs, they don't use the cards. They have a different system, their system is.
What's a key fob?
A key fob's like a little plastic thing, goes on a key ring, and you wave that instead of a card in front of the, the card reader.
No, they can't do that, they, they can't.
No. No, they have to get those issued from the principal. I like the cards better because you can put picture I D on them, and the teachers come where and bring them today, or whomever.
Well, with, with a key fob, does it have a, does it show the history of who's, who's used it and when? Can you cancel the key fobs when the season's over? I thought that's the only one I'm looking for.
I don't know the answer to that question.
Well, I was wondering, just to limit unauthorized access or, you know, and these are some accusations that we get that oftentimes aren't true. That people are, you know, give preferential treatment, unable to go in, and this stuff, and maybe they don't even do it, I find they do. But if everybody had to have a card, and it could be monitored and, and made invalid when the season was over, it would kind of cure it, plus you'd know who went in there and when.
Yeah, I know the cards can, I'm just not positive about the key fobs.
Well, I digress here.
And I, and I'd like to change those key fobs out of the cards, anyway, if I had the money, I'd probably already done it.
Well, what would be the cost to change the school, or change all the schools that currently use a key card at one door for school day access, and then hard keys at the other doors for weekend or after-hours access? What's the cost to do that, say, at County Valley? You're going to put two card readers on then?
The cost to put a card reader on County Valley's probably going to be thirty or four thousand dollars for the gym.
Is that one or two, is that one door, both doors?
Thirty or four thousand for a card reader, then? Yes. The school already has one on the front and one on the back, so the school's in pretty good shape as far as.
Would you need more than one to, for the facility?
I was only going to put one, Dana.
Yeah, but you're talking about Steve, you would, because at County Valley, the students come from the school to the back entrance of the gym to use the gym for F I A. And then for activities, everyone enters from the parking lot side. Yeah, but I'm saying, I'm thinking more of when school is not in session. I mean, if I'm having Saturday practice, everybody, you know, everybody would come in just one door. Saying keep the keys on, on, on the doors that currently have keys, put the fob on the back door, and everybody has to enter through the one back door? Well, I don't, I'm just, to get at the issue of, of, when school is not in session, I mean, I'm not really talking about during the school day when they get back from P E and stuff. But it's when school is not in session, and on Saturday, maybe practice award allegations that somebody comes in in the summertime and is practicing when they should be. Something to think about that.
I'll find, I'll have to find out about the key fobs on how, but to change the, the key fobs at, say, Duval and Midway to the card system, looking at some, probably, somewhere along, probably around fifteen thousand, somewhere around in that area.
Per school, or?
Probably per school. It is expensive.
Well.
Because they don't have the Andover system. That's why we didn't do it at County Valley's gym, we didn't have the internet, we didn't have the Andover, now we do. And we can very inexpensively add that key fob on it, on its school.
Are there's, at Harts, do they have that capability?
Harts has Andover, they have the, they have the card system.
So that, they, so that's already.
Yes, all the schools have the cards except Duval and Midway, they have the key fobs. Everybody else has Andover for the software for the heating, cooling, and Andover is the software for the, our card system.
At Harts, could the coaches be given a card and go in and monitor, you know, when they went? Same thing, they validate when or not use that, that can be done?
Yes.
At about such a great expense?
It's, it's there now.
Oh, okay. At County Valley, you couldn't, and at Duval?
Duval's got the key fobs, Midway's got the key fobs, and then cards are, they got the cards.
They got the cards, but not on the gym?
There's one on the gym.
Yeah, they got one.
So there's also doors you can access to a key in the gym?
Yes, there's both.
So what you're, you're saying, Steve, is that if, if you want to limit access to the key card system, you have to change the locks out on the doors in which people have keys to as well? And the principal told you, Fred, that she's had the keys changed several times?
Right.
But they keep getting.
Because, you know, the coach may not be the same coach through your.
Right.
And then he gives his buddy a key and.
That's the reason I thought the cards were the way to go.
Yeah.
I like being able to monitor, like Ms. Smith and I were talking about, I saw on T V today where, on your phone now, they could tell wherever you've been. You could go down through there, everywhere you've been, they could tell.
So we're going to look at our spouse's phone.
Maybe that's why I don't have one. Well, no, maybe that's why I don't have a spouse.
I was going to say a phone or a spouse.
I don't have any one.
I think we better change this guy. Okay, well, that's something, just maybe, Dana, at some time, you could just kind of give us maybe an idea what we, take, that's just something we were kicking around, because, you know, we hear all these, sometimes untrue allegations that people are giving favoritism, they would do things, and like I said, they're not often true, but sometimes they might be. But that would eliminate that if we were.
Well, the reason Duval, Midway have a different system is they had some grant monies that they got prior to the S B A funding, the safety access grants. And they chose their system, I didn't choose it. When I chose the system for the other schools with our, the S B A grant money, then I chose to go with the Andover because we already had a lot of the controls out there. And it saved us a bunch of money, and we, we could use cards instead of the basic key fobs.
And the cards are a lot more convenient than the fobs.
Well, they, they give you that I D, too, that you're supposed to have when you're in the school, so.
All right, you go ahead.
Okay, Lincoln County High School field, the athletic complex. I wrote a letter of intent, Ms. Lucas signed it, and we sent that to them. They weren't real happy with it, they wanted me to revise it, and I really don't know how to revise it, I said exactly what I meant to say. Which was that if we would pay for the survey cost if we didn't buy their product, and that there was, and there was a, a time limit and, and to do that, that if we did buy their product, that they would, that would void the invoice that they didn't see yet, so. I said pretty much what I wanted to say, and they didn't like it much.
Do you think it was because of no timeframe?
Yes, I think that's the problem.
Well, that's what we said from the get-go.
Right, we've got to give them a.
I don't know how to do that.
Well, I mean, that was what we. Said all along, or they, if it's ten years from now, is it still bound, or?
Yeah, yeah.
And that's what they said.
Basically, that's what they said.
To begin with, and that's how we wrote it.
Right, that's what you always say.
Were they coming to do?
It was always.
The last message I sent them was I didn't know how to revise the letter of intent.
Apparently, then they wanted a given amount of time, and they told you how long that is?
They have not, they didn't respond when I told them about, that I didn't know how to revise it, because I, I can't, nor can you, promise them three years, or two years, or five years, and we don't know when that money's going to become available.
If they don't give us a, well, within two years, four years, five years, how can we say yay or nay?
I'm kind of waiting on their response to my lack of response, because I didn't know how to change it.
Why can't we?
I can't commit to anything.
Why can't we have them to go ahead and do it and pay them? And then if they ta- take the job, they're to deduct that from our price.
I can do that.
Well, I thought that's what we, we had to.
I, I can put that right in the letter of intent.
I'm like, here, we've got the athletic, the football field money, eighty-five hundred dollars. Just do an invoice out of that, and then later on, if we award it to them, they can deduct that from our money, is that what you?
We can do it.
They tickle them to death, they'll be happy with that response. I just didn't have authority to do that.
Bet you could get a discount off the, but a price due, you offer to pay them now. This whole thing of just being definitively, when you get to decide, never do make any sense.
Invoice, so when we send it.
So that's what you'll kind of.
I'll make them happy.
Just tell them to come on.
Tell them to, we, or do that, start, start digging or whatever they're going to do.
That's what I'll do, I just wanted to hear it from the horse's mouth here.
You call me a horse. They call me a horse.
Mr. McKev wanted me to explain to you why they referenced the river in the survey.
Yes.
Letter, that's for the drainage systems, so that they would know exactly how to, where the drains, where the field would be, where, how deep they'd go, and all that good stuff. Because there are a lot of drains that are going to go in that field, and we got to get it to the river at some point in time. Or the lake, run some off to the lake.
There's no problem in running it straight to the river, it doesn't have to go through some kind of a system.
Yeah, it's just rainwater.
It's rainwater.
It's rainwater. Okay, Duval, we've been up there doing some plumbing on the senior high field house the last few days. Our, the water fountains, the, both bathrooms, exterior bathrooms, the inside bathrooms, everything has water now, everything's working. I took, we took the light fixture down in the bathroom today because it had some exposed wires on it. I had to call Brandon to figure out where that was at, because I missed it the first time I was up there. But I did find some exposed wiring in the junior high field house, they stowed our heater, practically new heater that we had in there to keep the water from freezing. And they just left the wires hanging out of the box, and they were, they were live wires, too. So, got that fixed, and, and talking to Brandon, I think our next priority would be to, to put a roof on the, on the home field house. I didn't realize that it had leaks. I've never been in it, it wasn't raining, so nobody had afforded it to me.
Led to the holes in the ceiling, right?
Yeah. But when I was up there today, it wasn't raining, so I didn't see any leaks, but Brandon assures me they're there, and I think that should be our next priority if that's what's happening.
And as we go down, so the home field, that roof you talked about, the holes in the ceiling, obviously, from that, drains in the floor are clogged, we know about, you're going to have.
I did not check that yet.
You're going to do that, there, right?
I'm going to do it. I'm going to check.
And you're going to get a urinal flusher?
The urinals are fixed, the flush armatures, all the urinals were fixed in the senior high field house. Now, we've probably got probably three days in the, in the visitors' field house. To get the water back where they stowed the copper, they stowed lines on the walls and go into the water fountain, they stowed, just like they did in the senior high field house.
Can't we lock those buildings?
Yeah, they can lock them, they just, they break in.
Those flushers, are they brass, why would they want those?
Uh, they're not brass, they're chrome, chrome flush valves.
Copper?
Just wanted the metal and just wanted the copper, so I could take, they probably got thirty dollars out of it, we probably spent five hundred dollars extra in it. And we'll do the same thing at the other field house when we get to.
So your intention, then, I mean, are you in the process, so these guys will know, at the home team field house and the visitors' field house, you're in the process of making those usable as they should be, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
All right. Now, now, Mr. McKev, I want to, you know something about the survey light or the surveillance light?
Surveillance, talk to them about where we.
Well, I noticed the junior high field house had a white overhead on the building that had been vandalized and for. And what I had done, I don't know, it's probably been ten or fifteen years ago, I went to all the schools with the power company. And we went to the field there at Duval, and we tried to strategically put some lights on poles, because they don't get vandalized near as bad as when you put a bill, put one up, you know, ten foot high building. So there are some lights up there that, they're dusted on lights. There's several on the track, and they're, they're located where it would light up the entrance and the exit for the home field house. Now, I don't know if they work, do they work?
All of them are going.
All of them, but one work? Oh, and all I need to do is find out the one that don't work, get the pole number, and that, that's the good thing about American Electric having lots.
I called them last year, American Electric found them, they said they have no record of a pole. So one of the parents that I had for the Little League worked for A E P, so he brought everything down there and fixed them all, and somebody shot one of them out with a B B gun, again.
Well, hook, pan, electric, real long.
What we do is, we pay like a, a fee, it's like seven dollars a month, and that includes the electric and the repairs, and they repair them for us. That's why they're such a good.
We're paying for that pole.
Oh, yeah, yeah, we, we're paying for it. And there's a pole number, I just didn't know, you know, I need to be up there at night to figure out which one.
Before he fixed them, there was only one that worked. And they, I mean, every one of them was out, and he came in, he brought his work truck down, brought, used their equipment to fix it.
How long ago was that?
Last year.
Last year.
Yeah, he can.
We're paying that fee where the light's working on.
We pay the fee whether the light works or not, so, and they'll fix it, they, they will, sometimes it takes them a while. We had trouble getting them at County Valley for the.
You can get the pole number.
If you get the pole number, too.
I'll make a call. The cameras, well, I know Greg Osney's been up there looking to see how we can get some security cameras up there to try to avoid some of this theft and breaking in.
I think Ms. Lucas had asked him to do that before.
We, some time ago, go back to when we talked about.
We did, and we had a price on phase one, which would be getting the internet from the Duval school down there somewhere near the diesel tanks. And Greg needed to update part of that pricing in that proposal, and I don't know if he forgot it or what happened, but we didn't. But he's in process back, he's back on that project.
Yes, now, we, in our discussion before and, and now, it was where could you locate in order to get the transmission or whatever? I'm talking in words, I don't know.
Yeah, that sounds pretty good.
But I, I just listened to them as, as they're discussing it and where to actually locate, line of sight or whatever you all were talking about.
They needed a line of sight from Duval's school to a point near those fields, and the diesel tanks are the only, in that area is the only place I think that it's possible. But that's just my thoughts, I haven't really looked at that.
And this was a discussion that we had some time ago, probably soon there after Vanvo, wisdom, and her, trying to figure out what to do to stop it.
Well, Dana, it wouldn't take a whole lot to fence that area in, would it?
So we could put gates on a road.
Gates down one end and up the other end, they bent or off or something.
Yeah, there's two steel gates open.
Are they?
Yeah, I'll be able to put them up there.
So, I mean, it wouldn't take a whole lot to lock that area off. Are you talking about the road itself?
Yeah, the road.
No, no, not the road, not that, that road that goes to the dressing rooms. Is that what you're referring to?
The main road goes up by the field, goes up to the top of the hill back on.
No, that's not what I'm talking, I'm talking about the home dressing room and the visitors' dressing room. There's, that's all fenced in anyway, except the gates are there.
Visitors aren't, visitors is wide open, there's no fence around it at all.
That's true. What were you saying, were you saying that there are gates on that Yellow Jacket Road? That's true. What were you saying? Were you saying that there are gates on that Yellow Jacket Road?
Yeah, on the main roads, there's on the upper end, we come out on Garrett's Bean, there's two steel gates up there we put up six, seven years ago. We were told we wasn't allowed to lock them.
They're not locked.
Okay, but that is a state road, I think?
Yes, we know.
Well, I think Mr. Wilkerson mentioned that, because we were wondering, is that road, you want, is that road used very much by?
Yeah, four wheelers.
Yeah.
Used all night long.
Well, what we were wondering is, it doesn't seem to be a, something that's a dire need for the community, like it's an emergency road or nothing. If we could approach the highway department about being able to block that off at each end and, and keep people from coming in and out of there. Cause I think, like Mr. Wilkerson later, if I'm able, if I'm in a pickup or something, yeah, I can drive up to the field house and I can load it up. But, you know, it's harder to load up something if you're on a four wheeler, you know, if you don't have where to, where all your goods. So we've just wondered if that might, but you're saying there's a gate there, you just don't block it, try to swing it up and go on in?
Yep.
There's some people there that live right beside all of it, probably, they probably might have been on foot.
Well, it's questionable.
And I believe that's the problem. You can just do a drive by. You can go right up to wherever you want. They'll knock the lights out, they'll vandalize the way in and take what they want and they're gone.
Well, with blocking, getting permission to block the road off with that help or is it we're just fighting to lose a battle?
No, it would help.
I think it would help. Does the state maintain that road?
No, I wish.
They haven't lately.
I may as well have to.
There's a hole they can bury me in.
Horseback and bug in.
Anytime, anytime during the night, I can look out the window and see cars going. It doesn't matter what, it's two o'clock in the morning, three, four, five, or some.
But people can get wherever they need to go without using that road, right?
Yeah.
So that might be something we wanna consider, Dana, cause, you know, as long as the road, like Larry said there, you know, people are going back and forth and, you know, just at their leisure in the middle of the night, it's, you know, we can have surveillance cameras and everything else.
We might just need to get permission from the Department of Highway, but I don't know why they would care.
Well, that's one of the, if we take a several prong approach, one, we put up survey or the surveillance cameras, like Fisher's talking about, we put to get the lights working and all that, and block the road off. I mean, you can't stop the people that really wanna do it. Make it harder for them to do it, I guess. Com- combination thing. Okay.
Hey Dana, you did, there is internet at the field, you know that, right?
What kind, um?
Frontier, wireless internet.
It's been those two years.
Two years for us to take credit cards for our Little League games.
Yep.
For the concession stand. And they told us as long as a million people is not on it, it's free. So that will help get cameras put up.
It might. It's just mine.
I mean, it reaches almost all the way down to the field house, she can get ready to transfer.
I know you had a phone down there, but I didn't know you had any.
Yeah, well, they installed it two years ago. They did it as a favor to the Little League, so they can take credit for us.
So, no, I didn't, I did not know that.
Said we could have a camera at your house. And you could monitor the field.
I mean, if it will help.
Yeah, actually.
People instead of it, that would make me happy.
We've got set up so, set up several principles that can be at home and see what's going on in their school.
All right, so we've got a plan then. We're addressing a lot of these needs here. I know, uh, Ms. Clayton said that, like the speakers for the press box, I think she, I know that she could maybe come up with the fund for, for that type of thing. I guess what we're looking at are these major issues to make both of the dressing rooms operable, uh, about football season and, and make, and try to keep the panels at bay as best we can and all that. It's a hard thing to do. So, uh, anything else about the, the football aspect, Dana?
Uh, I don't have anything.
So you'll go ahead with the roof, you'll just go ahead and start?
That's my next priority unless these people have a, something else.
I just wanted to say, speaking about, um, I know you said something about Ms. Clayton and her, uh, new PA system. And I can speak on it if you'd like, just real quickly, fifty-five hundred dollars, excuse my student activities, money a couple of years ago. Bought four brand new, uh, weatherproof community speakers, uh, new mixer, CD player, wireless microphone, base station. It's the best system around. Um, bought it from, uh, All Pro Sound out of Florida. Uh, we're a vendor with the, uh, with the county. It's excellent system, it'll last forever.
Get a chance to hear Tom again, won't you mention that to him?
Hello, it's great, great.
I wonder if she has a, you know, vendor or anything, she just said that she could possibly come up with the money for you. Anything from anybody else about the football? Football, cause now we're gonna go to softball. Okay. Now, Brad, we got a little diagram here, they came before us. Mr. Baker wasn't here when this diagram was given out. Wanting to alter the, uh, field of, of layout over there. You know, the old Griffithville Elementary School, we used to sit like right in here. And, and what they're, they've asked us to do is to consider coming in and making a so, a softball field that will go, yeah, free out here, a softball field in this direction. That's what they're, they asked us, that was the other day.
Hey Dana, I'm calling about that sewer plant over there.
The visiting dressing room, but they've been talking about it.
I called about today, I called the park city.
And then the home dressing room is over here somewhere, so.
There's a pump or a creation between, something's not working, it's throwing breakers.
So here's the field, the right, we were just talking about, the, the, I'm up Route three, if it down out of the road. And, and so the softball field would be the first thing you could see, and then the football field would be just right on the other side of it.
Even with the softball field there, they said there would still be room for the buses.
Yes. I talked, uh, I called Mr. Cummings the other day, cause I know that the potential problem or, you know, that, that the amount of space for, that's being shown, it's a sixty by eighty, I think is what that says.
Yeah.
Uh, so I called Rod and I talked to him about that, and I said, you know, run this past your drivers and see. Cause what they do in the evening, of course, at the school, like a lot of schools, they come in and the drivers surround the school waiting for the kids to be dismissed. But they all have to be in a proper order, you know, everybody has to be right in line. Uh, but, uh, and so sometimes what they do, they get there early and all, they'll park down there by the old school or somewhere else waiting for, you know, they, sort of their spot opens up, I guess you might say. So anyway, he got back to me, he said he thought, he thought that it was, wouldn't be something that they could not do. Now, this looks like that there could be about four buses that could back in there. But Rod seemed to think that, uh, you know, how, how many of them are that have to wait, I don't know. But that if necessary, they could go on this field house road, that there were other locations that they could possibly wait until they could get in their place into, in the line. So that's what he seemed to think that it was doable as far as his offer of transportation was concerned. Now, um, a couple of things, we've been over there looking around, a couple of, trying to get the lay of the land. I know Fred has and, and I haven't, of course, Larry just walked over to the, head of the hillside.
I'm not looking at him for long.
He's the expert on it, so he knows all about it. But there were a couple of things that, uh, you know, we were concerned about or were curious about. One was the, uh, you know, the elevation of things and that, and that kind of thing, how it would work out. But, uh, if we choose to do this, and I think there's, it's possibly doable, that one thing we would want would be, everything has to be coordinated with Dana. You know, he's our maintenance director and, uh, you know, he's, somebody from the board has to be responsible for what's going on there. So all the activities, they need to go through him to say, you know, this is what we're doing, and then, and kind of get his, okay, so to speak. Let me see, I'm looking my notes here. Uh, we, we've noticed that now the existing field, or the, uh, visitor's field house for football, we talked about a while ago, and then I found out from Dana now, that the sewer plant is that, is fenced in, not very far away from there. And then you're all proposing at some point to build a concession stand on the other side of that. Uh, and from what we understand, Dana, correct me if I'm wrong, that that mini sewer plant serves the, both of the dressing rooms, the home and the visitor, right?
That's correct.
Okay. Cause when I went over there, I was looking for that big sewer plant that used to be there and it was gone. And so Dana educated me and told me that that had been done away with, wasn't used anymore once the school was gone, and they had this one. So we, we have sewers that serves the two dressing rooms right now, so the work that's being done, there's sewage pipe for those. I'm assuming then, if we were to make our proposal a twenty by twenty concession stand that would be nearby there at some time, maybe after everything was leveled out the way they want, that that tube could potentially be tied into that. Now, I know when you all were, maybe when I was talking to Jeremy there, that, uh, thinking that, well, we would worry about down the road, you know, building the plumbing and all, but we've talked about a little bit, some of us had, that it looks like you'd wanna lay that plumbing out when you did it.
Yeah, let's get stuff to the floor.
Yeah, I mean, not that you have to make your connections then or anything. I'm like, Miss Luke, I don't know all this terminology. But, uh, you know, if you're gonna have a concession stand, you might have a way of washing your stuff and all that kind of business. So, you know, if it's already in place, even if you don't make your connections, you could do that later on. So I think that would be something else we'd like to, you know, to be, to be done. And I got to thinking, since I'm so prone to, uh, flooding, are you all, are you thinking of just it being level? Or are you gonna raise it up a little bit or?
It'd be ready, the bottom floor would be two foot higher than the field.
I know it'd probably have to be twenty foot higher to.
Well, it'd be.
Make it immune.
Final grade on top of where the tennis court's at, it'd be twelve inches higher after you brought it up. So then you'd be another two foot higher than field level. So you'd be, it'd have to be up three quarters of the way to the door of the football field, dressing room doors for it to get in.
Cause I know the other concession stand has problems, doesn't it?
Yeah, that's right. New silver, so it could be nine foot higher from the old softball to new softball.
Would be nine foot higher?
Yeah.
Might help a little bit. Okay, now here's, our understanding of this thing is that all the materials for this project will be donated. And Scott took real good notes when we was talking. And that the only thing that you're all really asking of the board, number one is permission to do it.
Yeah.
Uh, is the turf face, I found out that's the dirt they put in the infield. Uh, and Dana says that they use that a lot of times anyway, so the board would, you know, we, that's one thing they would want is infield dirt. And the other thing would be about fifteen hundred dollars worth of diesel fuel because the, uh, they have the, the equipment donated to do the work. So the only thing that we would really be, they're asking of us is permission to do it, the infield dirt and diesel fuel to operate these, uh, this equipment that's being donated. So there's not a whole lot of cost there. Now, the fence had me a little bit baffled. So, but what I understand the, the thinking is, if you take, your plan is to take down the existing fence that's around the tennis court and places like that, and then use it as your fencing, correct?
Put it back up and just paint it black or whatever.
Right.
With silver or whatever. I say, man, spray it black.
But once again, now, the only thing that you really dollar wise would want from us would be the infield dirt and the diesel fuel.
And permission.
Well, yeah.
Has anybody checked to see if, uh, if it's, uh, in floodway, flood plain, as far as where the field is?
How does your flood plain?
Well, if it's in a flood plain, you can feel. If it's in a floodway, you can't.
No, it's not in a floodway.
Well, that's not.
I, I just.
That's the kind of thing.
I had a branchie cancel on me one time because it was in a floodway. I just wanted to make sure.
Now, if you go up in the hollow or the leaves, but next to the road, it's not.
That's why we were saying, we think that you need to coordinate these things with Dana so that, you know, there's not something that we are aware of that comes up that, you know, throws a glitch in the, a glitch in the whole thing. So that's kind of the things that you, you, we want you to talk with him about. Now, will you require any field for this project?
Yeah, there'll be some field in it. It'll be right at twenty-seven hundred yards.
And you have access to that field?
We'll get it from behind the baseball field now. The fence in behind it where the hillside's coming down, pushing the fence open, we're gonna clean all of that out and holla down there. That'll put a drain on the baseball field also.
That will help the baseball field flooding? Mr. Expert, can you visualize that?
Sure. I was running and watching this Ford on the hillside and running over to the baseball field. We do that, put a ditch in behind it where there's a creek, that keeps that field dry.
So that will help baseball and it will provide the field that you need for softball.
What about the bridge, is it?
The crib.
I know the board has worked on the bridge, but it, will it hold up a heavy equipment?
No. It will with that. Just have to crib it up.
Okay.
We'll just stack crib blocks in the creek.
Okay, support it, it'll work.
Okay. Now, for reality's benefit, cause he wasn't here, they have different people who are donating fearless block, it's, uh, who's this? Service Electric, is that right?
Yeah, Service Electric.
And Lowe's, Home Depot, and State Farm.
I heard a lot of this on the phone.
Okay. So a lot of, you know, these people are donating materials and then I guess, I mean, who has the big equipment, but somebody does obviously. One of these days, we'd like to give credit to everybody that does this stuff in addition to you all that are definitely planning on doing the work. Now, Mr. Baker asked me, what is your timeframe? When do you wanna do this and how long is it gonna take you?
I wanted to start two weeks ago.
It was flooding.
It was underwater.
And too, by moving the, the softball field up to the entrance, that would help you with your security problem too. Cause then it would all be fenced in behind the field house. You could put a gate on it and nobody can get in. Cause if the fence is packed right back in the building, the visitors' field house.
Anybody have anything that I haven't?
Yeah, I, I have one. What's, what's this gonna do to the parking for all activities there?
Is that what?
It's gonna take some of the parking away, I know that.
Yeah, like football games, instead of parking at the entrance, you'll have to park down on the old softball field. You'll have the whole field open that field.
Oh.
Cause we'd just tear down the old concession stand, the old, uh, guys, pieces of it.
Rip it and all that out.
Yeah.
And that can be a parking there.
Yeah.
That work, Mr. Wilson?
That'll work.
You're the expert now.
I'm the expert.
I've been on the field a few times. Well, that's what I mean.
And that keeps everybody from parking on your baseball field, putting rides on their softball field and putting rides on the football field. Everybody just parking that one field and.
You gonna need gravel for that?
Figured we'd just do it like well.
They, they don't now.
They don't now.
I know, I, I can remember when you started to pull cars out there years ago.
Well, you got a tractor.
Yeah, we know where to go. I don't think it'll pull you out. I have to use small equipment. That, that'll work.
Okay, does anybody else have any questions about what they're proposing? Pretty good, anyone? Uh, me. Uh, yeah, we talked quite a while there last night, uh, and I got educated on, of all of these things too.
It'll help improve the looks of Griffithville.
Yeah, give the kids a place to play. Right now, they don't have no place.
Well, every time you get it fixed, they flood it out, right?
Well, it works that now. I mean, you just flush a Komodo to the street, you know.
Well, I mean, for a couple of years, they had to go to Garrett's Bean and play, then they've been having to come over here to Hamlin's play. And, you know, Hamlin's got enough going on without.
Yes.
Trying to fit another school wing. Well, uh, is it consensus the board that these people will be allowed to do this?
You gotta work fast if you're gonna make up two weeks. You're behind.
Okay, well, guys, uh, once again, anything, if you have any questions off, please go to Dana. If something that's unforeseen comes up, get with him and, you know, cause he's the one that we have to rely on to make sure we're doing things properly. And, uh, you know, we appreciate what you're doing and it's a great. Like you told me, it'd be crazy, it would be crazy enough to do this and I, you know what I told you.
Now, you know, we're all sane, everyone of us.
At the moment.
Yeah.
I told him that that's, we've been calling that chores, that we're in person. Okay, uh, but it sounds good that, you know, everything you've seen across, you know, you, a lot of things even like what this Wilkerson brought up there that were advantageous like to the baseball field, and all, they just wanna help with that, part of that flooding area. I'm, you know, we get floods like we had there a few years ago, I, I, there's nothing going out there. But at least it gives the kids a, a fighting chance to have a decent facility there and, uh, there's nowhere else to go, you know, quick kind of block them. But is there anything else that you all have that you'd like to ask us about?
Come on, ask them.
All right, one.
No, I'm just saying, wow, you know, we, that, that was too easy.
Well, uh.
I was thinking about more stuff, you know, come on.
One, one more thing, we was, um, what about the restrooms on the concession stand then? What we thought about booting them in the bottom of the old?
Well, what we wanna do, we wanna get these other things done and then we're gonna look at that because we're still trying to, cause right now in baseball, they're using a couple of the restrooms up there now, aren't they?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, but give us, let us think about that part first. If we can, we, our goal is to try to, if we can get the softball things done, if we can get the locker rooms functional, if we can get surveillance cameras, if we can get the lights, and ideally if we can get that road blocked off, then, you know, that'll be a great accomplishment. Then we'll, we'll look at that part too. But right now, we don't wanna commit ourselves to that tweak. We've got some things we wanna think about on that. Now, we're not saying no, but we're not saying yes to. But, hey, we, we've given. But, hey, we, we'd give a ninety percent of these things. All right, appreciate all you're all doing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Mister Smith, um, let me ask you a question since you're here.
Okay.
Tennis courts, could you update the board on your plans for Lincoln County High School tennis?
Tennis, okay. Um, right now, we've got about twenty, twenty thousand, maybe a little more than twenty thousand from the state. You speak budget digis money, they don't call it that now, I'm not sure what they call it. But, uh, so, we're not, we're not quite where we need to be for even one additional court. Fiber optics scared me over at Lincoln County High School. That serves every school and from Lincoln County to Harts, so, uh, you know, and, and to have some courts over there and some at the Lions Club field, we figured it was more affordable just to go back to the Lions Club field. So, there's space there for an additional court if we get enough money from county commission and board and to go along with some of the money we've got, then our goal would be to put one additional court there so that they can at least have a relatively decent practice and.
Right now, we cannot have home matches?
They can have them, but it takes, it takes all day long. Uh, it, you just, it's just hard to do.
I mean, do you all try to have home?
Yeah, they, they have a few home matches, if they can get somebody to come, you know. There's been several schools come out.
The issue is.
But, most of them are on the road.
If, you know, if you don't, aren't familiar with, at one time, Dana had thought, you know, where the deputy's trailer is in the high school campus, right there in front, that, that's where they proposed to be at one time. What he found is, when they started grading, is that they have a major cable there that, uh, serves all the school.
Oh, fiber optic.
And it probably.
Frontier fiber optic.
And we're just glad that nobody dug one foot deep.
That wasn't where it was supposed to be, it was supposed to be up there next to the road.
So, that's why he's saying he's kinda off of that location. Uh, and since at the Lions Club field, you already have some tennis courts there, you've got some lights there and all, that, uh, I guess what Dana's would like to do is just have tennis located at the Lions Club field rather than on the high school campus.
And add an additional court there when money's available, which, what, there's two, one, two courts? There's two there now. So, if you add a third, that would cut the, cut the time for tournament in half. Yes.
Well, what you got too is when they, uh, that team comes here, a visiting team, often times, they don't wanna split up their kids, you know, cause they have to be supervised and all that.
Yeah, you don't, I mean, I agree, you don't want, you don't want tennis courts there and here.
Yeah, that's what they had to do with Point Pleasant for just last year. They got some new courts, they got four new courts now, but they had the girls playing on two courts on one part of town and the boys on another. That's okay, you got two coaches, but they've got one coach out there at Lincoln County High School. I mean, have you split her in half and have her be able to supervise kids and probably.
No, it isn't like we're going to sever our relationship with the Lions Club soon, anytime soon, anyway.
That's, that's, that's for sure.
Better not, we're in trouble with a lot of areas.
That's what I'm saying, is that we're, you know, we're, we're dependent on that for our football field and unless there's, you know, several million dollars that drops out of the sky, that's gonna be that way for some period of time. So.
Go ahead, lose eighty five hundred dollars. Okay, all right, I just wanted to mention that, Dana.
Okay, hey Dana?
Have you got any information on their walk and steps, ramp and steps up high school, what they're gonna do or?
I've not gotten any word on what they're gonna do. I know that the architect has contacted, the company have come up with a plan, but I haven't seen a plan yet. Uh, the thing, in looking at the, uh, plans, the architect plans, uh, uh, we both, me and the state have reviewed them. The, the most obvious things that, that wasn't done when it was built is there was supposed to be a sleeve gone into the concrete and then the railing slide in a sleeve and they just drill a hole and put the railing down in a hole and then tried to caulk it up. So, they didn't follow the specifications in the plan. I can't find any letter where the, the construction company got approval to, to do something else. So, that's the problem I see.
So, you don't think it's an architectural problem, but a contractor?
I think it, I think right now, I'd say it's a contractor problem, not an architectural problem. Because they didn't follow the specifications.
Well, for me, is there a solution to the problem? That they're gonna come up with some makeshift plan that we're gonna inherit a year from now?
I assume the contractor responded, though, wasn't it?
Oh, yeah, it, yeah, yeah, it was, and, and we're still under the warranty period, we ain't even paid yet for everything, so. So, catching it, I'm glad we had a bad February because, you know, we caught it early. So, that's the good news. I don't have any, I don't have any good news other than that we caught it early and it's, it's.
It's somebody else's problem now, we just have to make sure we can force someone else to solve the problem.
Cause, cause I'm, I'm worried too, I'm like, Mister Phil, I'm afraid we're gonna inherit that problem and have to fix it ourselves. And that's not an easy fix in my opinion.
No, it's not an easy fix.
Very difficult fix to fix.
I know, I know you said that. From afar, from afar.
This is really good.
And then I said.
I kept bragging on it.
Yeah.
From afar.
All right.
Don't look too good up close right now.
No, I know you said it. Okay, thanks Dana. Okay, if there's nothing else then, let's move to the administrative section, please. Got motion? Let's move, thank you, thank you, Mister Wilkerson.
Okay, item A, school volunteers who on occasion may also serve as best chaperones or provide transportation for students to and from athletic events, academic competitions, or school athletics who have provided proof of private vehicle liability insurance and have completed the volunteer orientation. Item B, outstate travel for the following employees. Melissa Curtis, Michael Cruz, Rebecca Pritchard, Tiki's Island, Ohio University Chaperone, class students participating in a rewards trip May the twenty second, two thousand fifteen.
Any questions? If not, call the press, is that a long yesterday?
Yes.
Let's go to the finance question, or, how you put it?
I'm ready.
Carol made the motion. Second by Riley. And I guess Mister Mink is back on.
I'm up. Uh, item A is a scheduled invoices totaling one hundred ninety six thousand, three hundred forty one dollars, eighty one cents. See the attachment. Item B is a budget transfers totaling two hundred fifty six thousand, eight hundred fifty two dollars, twelve cents. See the attachment. Item C, budget supplements totaling six hundred ninety five thousand, four hundred seventy four dollars, twelve cents. See the attachment. And item D is monthly financial statements for February and March, two thousand fifteen, for review only.
Any questions? You're good.
This is Gabe.
How many things we wanna get you? I got some questions. Anybody else have anything for Jeff about the finance? No, then I'll call the press. Is that a long yesterday on the finance item?
Yes.
Okay, let's go to personnel then, please. Did anybody make a motion? Second by Larry.
Okay. Section A is for the employment of service personnel. Section B is for the transfer of service personnel. Section C is employment of extracurricular personnel. Section D, a leave of absence. And section E is for the retirement and all resignations, and that's noted under effective date. And then the last is to abolish the extracurricular athletic posting. It was for Lincoln County High School wrestling coach and we had put the wrong salary, so it will go back up.
Okay, if I have any questions about the personnel, audio.
What's the one year leave of absence for for the Down Valley Middle School teacher?
Um, Sam, your child. The board is allowed to give, that's a too long.
It's permissible.
It's permissible to give.
I mean, is she pregnant and kind of she's had a child?
She's had to do it.
Okay, I was here, I'll put the, I'm gonna believe that.
This, this is her second, yeah.
I just wanted to add.
And when, when you give a, um, professional a leave, first time, they are allowed to come back to the job they were holding. The second time, they are assured a job, but it's not that particular position.
Now, that, would that be, that would be her situation?
Yes.
Second, is the second leave or first?
Second, she does know that.
Okay, so she's got a job, but not necessarily where she is now.
Exactly.
And that assumes she has enough seniority to get a job, right?
Yes, she does.
Okay. Okay, uh, if there are any questions then, uh, I'm personally, I was at Mario's place.
Yes.
All right, uh, do you buy athletic fields, I think we've already covered that, and then students celebrate two thousand fifteen.
Okay, we, as they know, at the end of the year, we do the celebration, so we have, um, chosen June the second at that board meeting, um, that's already scheduled. And normally, we do a, um, five o'clock board meeting and then break for the six o'clock celebration and then if we have it finished, then we come back after the celebration. Is that still okay?
What day would this count? June the second, okay.
Uh, they were not paying.
We were talking about something else that just.
Do this count?
So, now, the location is at?
Lincoln County High School. Now, that is also senior night at Lincoln County High School and it doesn't start until six thirty, but that has happened to us once before.
So, will I have a board meeting until, I can say that if we just.
Five o'clock, we have a board meeting. Until six, we break and have the celebration.
Where's the celebration? Is that the high school?
It's at the high.
So, we'll have the board meeting at the high school?
Yes.
Okay. Then, if need be, we'll return to conclude the board meeting, right?
Correct.
And will it be in the same place we have it generally?
Yes, we usually have board meeting in the library and then the celebration in the auditorium.
Steve is always challenged to get it over with in one hour.
If Chris and Brad are keepin' it agenda.
We're sure, we do. We'll try and keep.
Try, please try.
Well, you gotta pick up, might people come aside.
Well, you're taking, you're taking away from the, from the celebration if you don't do that. And we, we'll be too tired to come back after, after celebration.
Actually, so, right, all right.
At eight.
Oh, yes, at eight.
That's surprising. Okay, all right, uh, then the vocational administrative session, Mister Mink.
Okay, I've got some information to share. Crack it in the pocket.
No.
I want you to have a hand.
Watch how he walks.
Yeah, I, since, uh, since we last spoke, right, you know, I, I wasn't here for last week or previous to a conversation about having a CTE administrator at Lincoln County High School whose sole responsibility would just be CTE. So, I, I've reached out to five school districts, um, who have comprehensive high schools such as ours. Various sizes when it comes to enrollment, some were double A schools, some were triple A. And what I found out in those conversations was that, um, in all five instances, there is an assistant principal who has a responsibility of overseeing CTE in those schools. In four of those situations, it's very similar to what we have right now with Derek Christian. We have a assistant principal with CTE responsibilities, but they also have other responsibilities as well. One school system is in Ohio County, um, who has an assistant principal slash vocational administrator whose sole responsibility is CTE, it's all this person does, and, uh, and has a two hundred twenty day contract for that position. In no instance was I able to find a school district out there with a comprehensive high school that has a direct just for that, um, situation. When it first came up the other night, um, and we were talking about it being a director's position, we talked about days. I was concerned when I first kind of, you know, mulled that over in my head and thought about it, that we could have a uniformity issue with pay. If we were to do something that's such as a director's position, it'd be less day than the directors for less days of employment than what we currently have with our directors here. Uh, cause there had been several grievances in the past, uh, one here in Lincoln County school system years ago, where the person prevailed. The director is a director and, uh, the number of days of employment, uh, should be the same. So, I ran that past our attorney, uh, she agreed that it could be an issue. So, you know, for any consideration for that being a director's position, uh, you know, you probably won't look at that being a two hundred forty day position as opposed to anything less.
Realizing our principals are only two fifteen.
Right, assistants are two fifteen. And our associate principal, Mister Mathis, is a two thirty.
Um, of course, I, you know, we'll see what we wanna do here, but I've never, I never envisioned it being a county director position. I always kind of thought we would, and maybe this is already, see, everybody, obviously, he's a lawyer, but I always thought differently being a school director that didn't adhere to, you know, didn't report to you all at this level, but reported to the high school principal. It all may just be semantics in the name that the person calls.
Nancy.
Yeah, we'd have to call, I think for the board, we'd have to, we'd have to call that position something different.
Well, cause under, what I was saying, it, we, that's why I think even that, I said, we'd all, we'd always have to create another on our salary schedule, a new school director classification, you know, and what it would pay and everything. But, it may be best just not use that terminology, is that what you're?
Yeah, and the recommendation I've received, talking to some folks in the other school districts was, you know, maybe we call a CTE administrative position or maybe another associate, associate type principal's position just for, uh, CTE, but.
Well, but now, if you get into that, then you're getting into days and stuff.
That's right, you're right, back in the same boat, but I, I have several job descriptions, uh, from, from these other counties that I've looked at. They're all very similar, I, they're almost cookie cutter, you know, maybe they picked it up from the same school dis, system out there somewhere, but, uh, you know, I, I can quickly put together a, a job description if that's a decision that we wanna post such.
Do you all have any, uh, recommendation, fridge, or give anyone?
Well, if you, if you're going to go in that direction, I, I, um, would suggest that you not use the term director. Because there were questions that came up even after a discussion that Mister Mink and I, um, had.
Like who the person would be, who were they were reporting to? What relationship between that person and the principal? Would they have any involvement at all in disciplining students, or, you know, what did that look like? You know, lots of, so, I mean, there were lots of questions.
Questions that came up, you know, is to, to what the, the duties would be for this particular position. Well, we could come up with a, a job description and let you all look at it and, or a couple.
Yeah, I can give you what I have, I've got some good examples.
Well, and could they evaluate?
If they, yeah.
Yes, as a minister, once they have, a certain administrative degree, they can evaluate.
Because their staff are considered professionals, aren't they?
Right.
You know, aside from the director being the number of days, if you'd also need the position paid per day, right? I mean, so you wanna talk about somebody who would make more than, if I had to.
Potentially, yes, depending on the years.
But, I don't really think that was our intent. You know, we, correct me if I'm wrong, but our idea was to have somebody that would be solely responsible for CTE and maybe have a minimal number of extra days to, you know, to begin closing year out, but, uh, so extravagant some of this.
Uh, how difficult do you think it would be to find, uh, a person that is qualified to do this job? I, I, I know it's a tough question to throw at you.
I would tell you that a word of possibility that we'd have such a position spread quickly, great number of people who are already contacted, you know.
I'll pay no money.
Throughout.
I have, I've forgotten vocational administrative degree.
If it's two hundred and forty and a half.
There's no doubt there'd be, you know, considerable interest in such a position out there for people, because they've said as much to me.
This is so important to me. We just have to do this right.
I feel a lot of Larry coming down and citing the qualifications you want, and I mean, that's how you're gonna direct that, isn't it?
Right. I mean, if you'd like, I can send you an email, well, some job descriptions, see what I have, if you'd like.
Well, do you envision this person being a disciplinary?
No.
Anybody?
No.
You know, we don't, well, disciplinary over the, I mean, you're talking about over the CTE program.
Right, right. But I'm saying, if we're, you know, if you have these, if you have three assistants at a principal, you know, and they kind of divvy up who's responsible, I got the tenth grade, or whatever it is, we don't really see that person being a part of that group.
And the person in Ohio County, at Willing Park High School, who is a CTE administrator, does no discipline, except.
Like what Rowley's saying, but in his area.
Right, just in that area of CTE.
Right.
Which might free up some of the responsibilities in the sense of principals.
Well, that's what I agree too, you know, we, there apparently are maybe some concerns there as far as disciplinary monitoring of students and all. If that responsibility was taken away from, let's say, Mr. Christian, his position, at least half of the, I don't have a time to devote to that, but whatever he'd devote to CTE would be gone, so that's more he could do something else, you know.
We're going to have to publicly, and you heard from Jonah this evening.
Right.
We're going to have to publicly justify adding another administrative position that brings the teacher to administrator level at the high school, probably lower than it is at any other school in county. I mean, I understand why we want to do it.
Right.
But I think we need to think about, if we have this position, how does it free up other people to do other things as well? So, I don't know that we create this position and take it completely out of the principal's hands. This person may need to assume some limited other responsibilities. I don't know, but.
I agree with you.
But from what Jeff said, it's a peach of a position we're thinking about creating, it's one that no one else has, there's a lot of interest in it, it's going to be a position unlike one that anyone else in the county has, where they have a very defined, or anyone else at the high school, let's say, where they have a very defined job. And it's going to create some resentment from other people over there, and this is just stuff that I'm thinking about off the cuff, not anything anyone's said to me, but this person better have thick skin, because there's going to be a lot of resentment from other people who have multiple levels of responsibility. So, when we start thinking about, if we create the position and we start thinking about hiring someone, having a very thick skin better be high on our list.
I agree with you one hundred percent, but we have to do something to get the vocational program on the road.
I agree, it's dead in the water.
It died a long time ago.
Well, you have the nursing, the nursing program that has, or whatever it's called now, is somewhat effective, but, and we're on the road to getting those people certified now, right?
There's some great programs over there, I'm not saying there aren't.
But we need to be, we need to be forward thinking with them, we need to be given our population base and the job market in this area, we need to be not behind the curve, but we need to be one of the programs that is reaching out, not following what everybody else is doing. I mean, I mean, that's.
And there's no doubt, I mean, having someone devoted just to CTE, a right person.
Right.
You know, you talk about making an impact, you know, there's no doubt, it would improve what's happening over there by leaps and bounds.
But I, Jonah makes a valid point.
Yeah, I agree with Rowley, and I don't know where Rowley was on the board when I had those figures here, we're not the highest ratio out there anyway, administrators to teachers and stuff like that.
Yeah, well, if you remember the seminar, we looked at, or had them, like the old hards big bagger, last year, they had a lot of those figures available, and, you know, a lot places are a lot worse than us.
Right, that's right, yeah, and when you say worse, you mean they have a more.
The principal has more teachers, they're more teachers for administrators than our chapter.
Yeah.
Ratio is higher, at a lot of most.
I'll check.
But you know what, Jonah, you did have a valid point, and I have always felt, you know, that school is too spread out, the gym is way from the school, and I think it's very hard on them up there, and the teachers do have a low morale right now, and when we do this, it's going to be even lower. I think that I really think Jonah needs help up there.
He made a good point. I think that that's what we're going to have to take all these things into consideration. I have a little bit of apprehension about creating jobs, knowing the econ, the economic things were happening, you look what's happening, already you see the effect of the county condition, the counties around us, and read this with the paper, March paper, I guess, and able to refer to that too. I wouldn't be a bit surprised here in a year or two that we aren't looking to redo staff again, but we'd be a bit shocked, it's about, at the same time, we're going to have to reselect and we want to keep and create.
Well, Mr. McKipp, Trish, when will we know how many vocational students we'll have next year?
The enrollment students over right now, I spent the morning over at the high school, and they're doing interviews, it's part of the simulated workplace requirement for next year. I would say by the end of this week, we should have some hard numbers as to how many students are going to be in each one of those programs.
And I want to go ahead, and I told you earlier, with the State Department, being working with them, they have customized a survey just for Lincoln County, and Lincoln High School, along with middle schools, and getting numbers from them regarding the current programs we have, as well as any other programs that they may be interested in. They're going to analyze that for us, give us some analysis, as well as looking at the job market within our region, and what programs may be, that we would need to look at either replacing or adding, you know, I know you all have talked about that before, but they have done that for some other counties, and they've actually sent us a copy today, Mr. McKipp and I are going to meet with Mr. Snyder and Mr. Mathis tomorrow, look at it, if it's okay, it can be done within, you know, a couple of days. All the students have to do is go into the computer lab, answer those questions, the data goes directly to State Department, and they will compile all of that data for us and give it to us, so that will be just within a couple of weeks.
Let me throw out something wilder, just hitting, I know that we share certain services with other counties through RISA. I mean, we, or has anybody ever given any thought to a person that would supervise a CTE program in multiple counties, at the cost of which would be shared through multiple counties? Now, it's something to think about in these tight budget times, and I don't know if there's, if there's economy and scale that involves something like that, or even, are our students so different than the students in the other counties in our RISA district that our needs are different than theirs could be? And I don't know, just something to think about.
Yeah, it is a good, that's a good thought.
It is, because we do share services in RISA, actually, we're going to have a conference call to talk about other services that we may be able to share with RISA, just within the next couple of weeks, if you want to talk about. But I wanted to go on and expand a little bit on what you all were talking about just a few minutes ago. If you recall, when Mr. Bruni left, and Mr. Linfield took the special education director's position, we did not fill that position here, and we sort of give them all of those responsibilities out to other directors. And so, when this came up, I have to say that there has been much discussion with our directors about, you know, they absorb responsibilities so that we didn't have to replace someone here. I just want you all to be aware of that, you know, with Jonah's comments, as well as maybe just keep in mind that we, that's what we did, because when we start heading positions in schools, I think it's brought up, how does it look if we don't do something in the central office? Okay, and that's one of the things that we did here in the central office, as well as back in the special education office, two of the I U. coordinators over the last three years, you know, retired, and we did not fill those positions, so those are just some thoughts.
Because I do know that we talked about the fact that we often are criticized for one A position in schools, and I hear it, and we crawl back on, it could be eliminated, and we're correct to do that, but I can see where they're coming from. And what Rowley said, look, you only, you need to think about that, and possibly we can kick out a round one that can afford that conversation, but, you know, that person's not going to be there all the time, and I know that's one of our issues with Mr. Christian, not him personally, but that he's, a part of his time is devoted to CTE. With that, if it's a reasonable thing, considering his interest with it, very, a lot of questions.
It's something to look at, and the impression I got when Mr. Christian spoke to us on that was that with all the pressing responsibilities he has on a day-to-day basis, that if he happens to have a little time left over at the end of the day, that's devoted to CTE rather than somebody globally looking at CTE as their whole job, but just in different ways. It's just something literally that hit me right as I was sitting here, so.
Well, there's many, many parts of the program that he could take care of two counties at one time, I may be going to State Department for something, I mean, he could take care of Lincoln County, whatever other county too, if he were working both counties.
What other county in RISA has a point of view of this?
Mingo County.
Mingo.
And Mesa.
And Mesa, okay, so there are only three, so.
So that'd be the first thing we had to say, was there any interest?
Yeah.
Right.
And of course, they couldn't do a district.
Are you, we were talking about not having a full-time person, is that what you're saying? Well, would be someone that would be overseeing a couple, maybe maybe two, or maybe three, I don't, we just have to see. If there is, the other two counties may say, no, I like, I like what I'm doing, I don't want to be part of it.
Right, yeah, yeah.
Would there be a possibility that we could get somebody that would devote like a half a day there and a half a day with Jonah? An assistant principal, and then a half a day come over here and a half a day, that way it wouldn't be so spread out and we'd cover both?
Yeah, I thought about that too, because I agree, I go into the guy, but I was in middle school, I have kids there, great kid there, and when you go to the athletic event, Jonah's the only person to be there, you have to have someone there, there are a number of athletic events, he's always running like a cat, on fire, he comes going to the school, no question, it's a lot of work, but.
Next year, two hundred and eighty kids, with one person that's spread out the way they are.
I just think if you have a person that has two distinct responsibilities, no matter what they are, that you're not going to have that person giving the focus to CTE that this board wants. Whereas if you had someone who we were paying fifty percent of their salary, or thirty-three percent of their salary, who is solely focused on CTE, but in multiple jurisdictions, that should get a better result, because anytime you get to make two job responsibilities with two different sets of offices, they're going to get pulled between those two different sets of job responsibilities, there will be extra responsibilities each on them. I mean, in theory, I love the idea, but Jonah could definitely use help, but I don't know practically how it works. Because you get the same situation without Mr. Christian to do that, or any other person, it's a part-time principal, and a part-time assistant principal, and part-time CTE administrator.
The problem is, this comprehensive schools, we're like, we go in Mesa, and would somebody want that bribe to do that? They're just about tapping something around here to respond.
Well, the first thing you do is have to say, hey, you have the.
I mean, it may not be feasible.
Well.
For a number of reasons, it may not be feasible. But, you know, if we had X number of dollars to spend, and everything I look at, every decision we make starts with, can we fund it? If we can't fund it, no matter how much we'd like to have it, then it's a non-starter for me. So, if we had fifty percent of this CTE person's salary, how happy would someone like Jonah Agnes be with an assistant principal two and a half days a week? That we could then fund with the other fifty percent that would otherwise go to a full-time CTE administrator? We can even do those things, I mean, it's our money, we should be able to spend it like we want. Sometimes you can't meet, and we deal with this on every financial issue that we have, you cannot, we just don't have the money to do everything we'd like to do. We don't have the money to do everything we need to do, much less everything we'd like to do, so.
Now, does the state kick in any extra for a vocational?
Well, I think so, yeah, it's the first amendment, it's one for that position, what did, I guess.
They may not be getting now.
Yeah, we're getting money, it's not, there's not much, it's not a big problem.
I mean, if we were having a full-time job, would we get more? Well, you know, it was controversial what we did with the assistant principal that's focused on careers, there was controversy over that, I know we haven't had a lot of time yet to see how that's worked out, but the sense I get is that it's possible. Yes, no?
Yes.
So, that will benefit our students, maybe not today, but down the road, so the people that generate controversy over that hiring decision will eventually see that we will run it. I think moving in the direction of a CTE administrator is also a very, very smart thing to do. We just have to be able to afford to do it, and still meet our other needs, so.
And one of the options is not just making the existing person there his primary job, you don't add any jobs, but you reduce the number of administrators that might be more aligned with E W K. I just thought that. Point would make sense.
Jeff, what do you and Trish recommend?
I'll tell you, we had a great big pile of money, I'd like to see an administrator with sole responsibility of CTE, one of them, we have a great big pile of money.
I know, you're the finance person.
I think you watch.
That's true. Wearing that hat, I'm going to say, no, it's not conservative, partly.
I think we're going to have to, we've got to come up with some money somewhere, because our kids are getting into so much trouble out here, and I think if they had a focus on small engine repair, or building, or whatever, I just think it would help all around, and when they graduate, a lot of them something like college, and I need a plumber. Well, you know, my thought is this, if that's, if that's the design, if that's the design, then we just need to forge a hand, do it, take the criticism, and hopefully, people will then begin to see the benefit, you know, because it doesn't matter what we do, what we do, you know, they're going to be people that are opposing it, but you just have to keep in mind, what is it that we believe is the best thing for our students? And it appears that the belief is, we need to focus on and grow and develop that CTE program.
program and make it a program where we are teaching our students skills that they can go forth and become productive citizens, be able to get a job, and we have an outstanding program for the students that want to be in a CTE program. And I think it will take a little bit of time to figure out what exact programs that this county needs in order to meet the demands in our area that our students, if they do not want to go far away, that they can find a job, they have a good skill, so you just have to, we can't please them, we all know you cannot please all of the different groups, but our group sounds like is a focus directed toward our CTE program. So you just have to buy a quote and say, this is what we want to do, and this is why. We want an outstanding program. We are seeing our programs not graduate those students with certificates or the skills in order to go out and get themselves a job or go on to continue the vocational program in a, a community college or whatever. And just, you know, we get precise all the time.
I think the goal is just one of people, just heard the speech you just gave, they would understand the need for this, I mean, I'm that is right. But, you know. By the goal.
By the goal. And find out what those programs are, and that may take a couple of years, but get them in there.
Yeah, I worry about that. Everybody doesn't go to college, and it seems like the trend of late is, the whole kids aren't going to college. So you have to provide for some location.
Me and your speech recorder, I don't need.
And Mr. Lincoln Durham got it there.
We'll tell everybody to listen to the first speech.
I thought he was writing it down.
I know, I was.
Looks like a story list.
People may get subscribe to the paper that said that.
We'll just say this is what we're gonna call them in how many days.
Okay, let me, I'll send you, I'll send you the job descriptions I have, so you can look at those and decide if there's anything you want to pull out, add to.
Okay, so you wanna, are you gonna assign it a title?
Yes, we'll come up with a name for it. So I think we need to make it unique, myself.
And do a salary thing, just for that particular title, adopt it, you know, go through the process.
So one, we're gonna have to have a general idea, how many days, right? Do I have any thoughts to share with Jeff on that?
I don't see anything beyond two and a half days, Michelle.
What's teachers?
Teacher, two hundred.
That's, I don't see why they'd have to be there more than what we do for school. Do you all?
They'll have complete oversight over the entire CTE program, I think they would need a little more time on the front and back end.
We could give them extra days if we need to, but.
Well, some of the things they might, I'm not talking, maybe you mentioned like five days, but sometimes on their conflictors and things like that.
Is it summer?
And so that they might be able to, a ten dollars, on any, you know, order of number of days. Have you developed a salary schedule that then be based on, just like a teacher's salary, correct? But with a supplement, maybe?
Was it going to be that?
It wouldn't be comparable to a supplement that county directors get, that forty dollars a day.
It could be supervisor, it could be a coordinator, you know, there are various titles that some of them we also have, but.
We want to make it one unique, it's not a county.
Right, right.
And we don't have any summer off. CD's summer off. No, no. Now, the Boag program, the teacher, she's two forty. She has some things she does with the students in the summer. It's new.
I think it's historical.
It's historic.
Historical.
And they would have no other job, no supplemental coaching job or nothing left.
Right.
I can tell you that they could apply, we'll take.
Yeah. And if there's some additional days, that's attractive to people out there that might be interested. I know the assistant superintendent I spoke with in Ohio County, you know, he taught two hundred and twenty days, just because of all the professional development that's out there, particularly during the summer months, that was a good amount to, you know, for that person to have.
They're gonna have to get a vocational school ready for the kids to come in and go right to work, so they would need days before, and then they're gonna have to have some days to clean up after the kids and.
Remember your assistants get two hundred and fifteen days.
I guess I wanna say that, you know, let them go home and go play.
And I don't, to me, I never envisioned that this person would have, with like that many days.
My suggestion is to.
And then if we need, as Carol said, if we need to give this person additional days, the board could do so.
Should there be a conflict or something?
And remember, if they're already over two hundred, you could give them additional days without touching them, and it's part of the program. And if they're over two hundred, they are, you can do a flexible schedule, you know, if they're times during, you know, December or whatever, and you want them to have the days at the end of the school, there could be three or four days if they don't.
Okay, they don't work in December, they won't get one day.
Yeah, three or four days, right. Yes, that's another thing with numbers over two hundred.
Two hundred sounds good, you come up with a name, you know.
We'll come up with a name. I'll put a job description together for you and I'll share next to, next, next movement.
That sounds good. Yeah, the book I had to think through just was, you know, I think a lot of good points have been brought up here, the sharing concept, all the things. We just need to make sure we think it's a need, but we all make sure we live within the right brackets and consider it.
Mr. Edgell, am I correct that if we have a comprehensive CTE program, that anything offered has to be within the building, it can't be farmed out to other?
That's correct, yeah, that's true.
That is a stupid ruling from someone.
Yeah, because we need to look, maybe utilize some space here, and we, you know, we were just told no.
That's ridiculous.
You wanna go to the next stake board meeting?
I know what you're saying.
Well, I don't even know whose role it is, I'm just saying.
And we, we, I think we've kind of got that settled, revisit Jonah's problem. Make sure we have two hundred and eighty kids and.
I think we can certainly think about these, you know, it's kind of, I agree with what you're saying, it's a valid point, but I haven't made a conscious think through it.
What are the numbers for other middle school principals look like, county line, administrator to teach?
He's the only, he's the only middle school principal we have, the rest of them are PK three eight or Lincoln County.
What, what kind of numbers do they have?
Midway, midway is a PK three five, and so is West Ham.
There's three hundred and twenty students at Midway approximately, PK five.
Hmm, one administrator.
And how about West Ham?
There's what, approximately six hundred students in that school, PK.
So they're about three hundred. But one thing.
But they don't have athletics in this.
And middle school kids are hard, I mean, I would think the hardest kids demanding on every level.
Well, what about the possibility, just for you to thought, if we had a person that was served in a halftime capacity that was on staff there? In other words, they taught half a day, something or other, and then they serve as administrator part of the day.
We kicked that idea around before, yes, that's a possibility, we could look at something along those lines.
Because they would be on campus all the time.
Teach half the day, be the administrator.
Yeah, I mean, that's possible.
And if he didn't manage it too long tonight, but of course he has, maybe this is what we're gonna have to do, because if there's a personal student, we're gonna have to add a teacher there. He's trying to decide, English or math, he's gonna have to, cause of the person in mind.
So it's, he's gonna need a new person to do, do something. That's a lot of ballgame.
Yes. But, and then their salary would be a little different also, because.
Fortunately, we don't have the teaching principals anymore, but we used to.
We might next year.
That's how I kicked off.
Well, I'll look at it, I'll get some information.
Okay, I have an unrelated question. Several meetings ago, a couple of people came and spoke to us about middle, the interest in middle school soccer. Oh, is that on the agenda to talk about?
Actually, I don't think it's on there, but I, and I didn't know I'd be reading.
Under comments.
You wanna jump into soccer? Although it's there, dear, dear.
He's got no other stuff.
He's about to have a sleeper. You're like, you have enough to put on an interesting burger.
Thanks, thanks, thanks.
I would have put something together for you, but some of this information I've actually, I just received it this afternoon from the principals, terms of interest. I'll start with Hannah, I received this from Mrs. Ferguson earlier, or late last week, actually. She surveyed her students, and she has eleven boys and twenty-three girls. They're interested, would be interested in participating in soccer next fall, that's students right now who are in grades five, six, and seven, you know, who.
Where was that?
This is Hannah, PK eight.
And now, what grades will they be?
They'll be, they'll be grade six to eight next year.
Six to eight will be the criticism, right?
She's very much, the principal's very, very interested, highly interested in having such a program. She thinks it'd be really good for the number of kids they have that's interested now. She thinks others would probably also want to be able to participate. Her only concern was just the fact that with everyone using the field, what fields are available here in Hannah, both at the Lions Club field as well as at the high school, you know, her only concern would be about being able to have a place for her kids to practice. Otherwise, I think she, you know, as far as scheduling matches, you know, the, check that? Check that. At that, you know, they could work that out with all the fields that are available, they could get the contest. Dubal, Dubal has nine boys, eleven girls, they're interested in playing soccer next fall. Mrs. Clayton is very much interested as well in the possibility of offering soccer. She indicated that there's a field or area somewhere up there around where the football field's located now, I'm not sure she's talking about the softball, softball field, what you're talking about, the stadium? Because that position, that field might be gone now, but, you know, of course she would need goals for the football field, for the soccer matches, but she'd be on board with higher program.
Now, it was our understanding that these could be portable goals.
Yes. Then we've used them at the high school for years.
Carry them around one each?
Well, I mean, I hear they're better than the ground center.
Well, some places they are.
So everything's in there, and she thinks that she has a field, but she might get surprised.
Yeah, yeah.
There should be, there should be space in there.
Trying to picture, would it be possible for them to practice on the baseball field outfield?
I don't see that. I just need to look at it. I don't know that much about soccer.
Yeah, well, they play soccer in Yankee Stadium, I know that. You can orientate, just put a rectangle within the diamond, it can be done.
Soccer spring or fall?
It's a possible.
Fall.
Davao, Mr. Agnes, the principal has fourteen boys and twelve girls interested. His concern's the same as the concern that Mrs. Ferguson has, and that's whether or not there'd be an area available for the kids to practice. You know, besides his middle school football team program over there, he also has youth football, utilizes that field.
What were the numbers at Davao again?
Fourteen and twelve. I apologize again for not.
No, 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 I'm not free this ad, Jim.
Sure, I can get it. So, but he's, Jonah would be very interested.
So they have middle school and youth football.
Yes.
And that brings us to Hartz. There was not nearly the interest level at Hartz. There were six boys and five girls, said they'd be interested in playing soccer.
How many sound two, someone?
Eleven. Well, yes, clear with seven, yeah.
Her concern would be an area, you know, location for them to practice, because they just have the one, the one ball field. She's concerned about the cost associated with starting up soccer, where the money would come from, in terms of the goals, the equipment for the kids, and uniforms, those are all concerns for her.
Soccer's cheap. I mean, kids buy their own cleats instead of shin guards, and you buy a five-dollar t-shirt, three-dollar pair of shorts, and a pair of long socks, and you're good to go, mouthguard.
There'll be a lot there.
Easy, right?
I mean, I don't know, we, we, we being the community of Rangers, started our own youth soccer league years ago and bought everything we needed, and believe me, that isn't a well-to-do community. But we still have all of that, and everything that we bought is still functional, the goals, the PVC goals, the same nets, we're still using all of that, so that the cost is minimal compared to any other sport that I'm aware of.
Now, do you would have to have two coaches?
Well, I, you know.
He said, he said you could have a unisex team.
Said you could have a weight team.
Yeah, it might limit your, I think he said it might limit the teams you might play, plus.
Right. But you're gonna have some kind of salary involved.
I'd be looking at that pay sometimes a lot different look like.
It'd be the same teams to be at the field, but.
Right.
You have a place to play.
Well, I mean, it's nice, Sean knows a lot about soccer, it's nice to have a full soccer field to practice on, but realistically, you can set a soccer goal in corner of a football, in the corner, rear corner of the end zone of a football field, use the end zone in fifteen yards. And half of the field to practice everything you need to practice for a soccer team.
That's what we do, I mean, my team is tiny, there's first graders, same with the second, third graders, they're doing quarter of the field, because I use a quarter of the field, second and third graders are using a quarter, and then the older kids are using half the field, so you've, that's practice.
Of that, is it, of the soccer field?
Yeah, of the main soccer field at the high school. Monday night, I hit a quarter of the field, second and third grade had a quarter, and then the older kids had the other half. So you have three teams practicing at one time.
But the high school would buy into that concept, obviously.
Yeah, well, this is the spring league, the youth soccer league, yeah.
Well, I'm thinking is, football coaches are a different grade.
Yeah, that's kind of what I'm using too.
But now, just keep in mind, ladies and gentlemen, after we paid his eighty-five hundred dollars, they start scraping that field down, we've got a place out there that everybody in the whole county can practice. It's nobody uses for nothing else.
Well, now, they give, they give practice and play soccer there on that field.
Yeah, that's right, yeah, frustrated us, yeah.
Yeah, we have to, we have to put some dirt, you know.
Mr. Christian has kind of expressed in the past that he would want to practice there for football. So, I mean, for me, that would be a, for the Hamlet area, maybe a possibility.
And in preparation for turf, maybe one day out there, was that, did I have a conversation with that meeting, with being gravel?
Yeah, they're gravel.
Is that wrong? I mean, as opposed, I.
Well, now, this child kids aren't gonna do any of that.
But now, this outfit's not going to do anything, just surveying out there.
We're just wanting to get to phase one, where we get the survey done, and then phase two, we'll start scraping it down, and then worry about the rest later on. I'm just saying, in the interim there, if you got it down to the level.
Dress it up, get the rocks off for you.
Yeah, get the rocks off. Get it down, put some grass in there, use it for something.
Yeah, that's a, that's a big area.
They might, they might.
Sean would have to go through the end zone.
And, and I, I would just point out, because I'm heavily involved in having with the youth soccer in the county for years and years and years, that all of the areas that strongly favor soccer have existing youth soccer teams, Hartz does not. So, what I would expect to happen, you know, football hasn't been a big hit in Hartz, but it involves an oval and ball, and if you have a round ball, like soccer's playing, it has a much better chance to succeed. But if the kids up there were involved in the youth soccer program, you'd see much higher numbers of people wanting to participate, because as much as I hate to say it, being a former football player, soccer is a, no, he can come in, it's not private, you know, sit down and be quiet. That, that one's been playing over there, they, they won tonight, by the way. So soccer is a sport, I mean, right now, it's G twelve, and they're, they're playing on a unisex team. That's, you know, there are two youth teams of their age in Dubal this year, two from Guy Val right now. But everybody can play soccer, there's a place on a soccer team for everybody regardless of your ability, and everybody enjoys it, hardly anybody doesn't like soccer. So, as much as I would hate to see it take away from football, or compete with football, I think it's a better sport for more kids. No, I don't agree to say. You've not watched these kids play soccer.
Last two years, yeah.
You've not watched the Ranger coach kid play soccer, you wouldn't say, watch, don't watch Madison Street play.
They're having concussions right away.
Yeah, that's.
Girls worse than boys, seriously. Girls just kill each other, it's great.
It's great.
I mean, just want to see that passion, you know? I want to see kids be passionate about it.
So, it looks, at least, Mr. Clayton thinks that Dubal has a field to play on. We may have an option out here at Hamlet, if we do what we're talking about. So, but Guy Val would be the, the one we would have.
Thanks to what Sean's saying, I, you know, we probably would be able to use that field possibly.
The high school field for Hamlet?
No.
No? Oh, yeah, yeah.
There's no reason for cooperation, you couldn't practice a middle school football team and two soccer teams on the same football field at the same time.
I'm just trying to picture.
I mean, I know football coaches are territorial, but, that's why you have a principal saying, you will share the field today. This is, which half do you want football, you refer, which end do you want, north or south?
Yeah, but a football team does not use the whole field only on Thursday when they practice, ten kickoff from ten. I mean, they, they, they never practice one of them.
Those kind of, they don't have a, just maybe. Okay, anything else about soccer that you didn't already know or you're wanting to add?
Just what Robbie's saying about the Ranger experience. You know, Zara's first game, with my precious little eight Hamlet nights, who were way too polite, were beaten twelve-two by one kid from Ranger, a little kid called Gavin, a little tiny little blond guy, he scored ten goals.
Gavin?
Gavin. Tiny little guy, just, just lethal.
Aggressive.
Oh, just wonderful, you know? But I had clearly seen a brother or sister play it over the last few years. I'm trying to, I'm telling you, the Hamlet kids are just soft, I don't know, they are. I talked to him last time, they are.
Second grade through eighth grade together, depending on when we get through, we're all the same coaches. I, I, I'm coaching three teams in some way, shape, or form. Well, let me tell you what, you put a second grader out there with an eighth grader, that second grader will be mean, or they will not play, they will not practice for big games. No, all, all joking aside, we practice our kids, if you want to see what you can practice soccer on, drive down Ranger Bottom, look at our little tiny field where if you miss kick a ball, it's in the river.
It works.
We practice on it, the kids know not to kick, kick toward the river hard. They learn, you don't have to have the fancy of fields, you can adapt, and you can have soccer in a tiny space with very few dollars outlaying, and it will accommodate a lot of kids.
There's no doubt it's growing popularity, man, it's a real good exercise.
I heard that Hamlet goes, he has to run all the time. Not necessarily, you can pick a position where you don't have to run all the time in soccer.
I like bright field.
Safeties, the safeties don't run a lot.
Yeah, but they, they kicking that ball at it a lot.
Well, not, not if your runners are doing a good job, the safeties don't have to defend a lot. If your runners are keeping the ball on the other team's end, then the safety can just stand back there.
If you get your team beat real mean, they keep the ball out the other end, you're all right.
Safety and goalie don't do much, they stand there and pick four league colors. And we, and I say that, feel a bunch of little ones literally do that during practice. They'll run off, tell their mom, look, I have a four league.
Yeah, butterfly.
Hey, it's, you know, it's all part of the fun, it's all good.
All right, uh, but it does look like there's a lot of interest in the Hartz area at this time, but it might be one of these days. Okay, anything else about soccer? Anybody have any other comments? Mr. Lucas, you have any comments or concerns about the other topics? We've covered about the game, you did, so.
Well, yes, uh, we're going to send you all an email, and I forgot, there's a bridge on the Gay Lake that has, uh, been deemed unsafe for us to cross, just, just happened, no, no. So we are going to have to just do extra due to put a bus to go around the back until they give the bridge. So if you hear anything about that, it was, um, definitely, um, unsafe for us.
Kind of like they do over on Culver's, like.
Yes, but I think they're going to be working on this bridge since, because I think there were like twenty students that are affected right now on the other side, so they're going to have to go around, down, order to be in the back to take the kids out of, uh, it was not safe for them to cross, I was trying to get them to, you know, walk across, they didn't. They didn't think that's a good idea. I didn't know, just wanted to let you all know, the Spring Games, uh, is on May the twenty-first, and, um, the Lions Club field.
Spring game.
Four, that's four of the three M.
Special.
Special, oh, oh, Spring Games. Uh, May the twenty.
It is called Spring Games?
Yes. Twenty-first, I'm sorry.
May the twenty-first.
May the twenty-first.
Did you say twenty-fourth?
Twenty-first. Anything else, Jim?
No, that's.
Anybody else have anything else?
Shut up.
Around the horn here. Okay, all right, if not, this, we'll go down to the, uh, the last item on our common concerns, that's the superintendent vacancy. I guess for that, we'll once again have to go into executive session, uh, to discuss the applicants that we had. Do I have a motion to do that?
I may.
Okay, Carol makes a motion at seven fifty-nine, go into executive session, that second. So, Mr. Lucas, he seconds that motion. Then all you have to do is go into executive session, discuss superintendents.
Yes, yes.